Well, hey, Southern Oregon. So glad you could join us back on the Real Estate Show. I'm Alice Lima. I'm a broker here with John L. Scott Real Estate in beautiful Southern Oregon. And your host of the Real Estate Show, we're gonna welcome Brad Bennington from the Builders Association of Southern Oregon. Brad comes on the show every so often and brings us to speed what's going on with the local contractors, the building industry in general, and the state of Oregon. Because you know, the state of Oregon does have a lot more rules and regulations than most other states in the Union. Not saying that's good or bad, just saying that is what it is. And Brad is up on all that. So Brad Bennington will be coming into the studio shortly. Let's take a quick minute and check in with all three counties' housing statistics for the week. Josephine County this week, prices are up 22%. Congratulations, Josephine County. So year over year, the prices are up 22%. Average single-family residential home in Josephine County this week will cost you The number of sold year over year in the residential market this week in Josephine County were down 31%. There were only 13 closings on SOMLS in Josephine County. But we're seeing the number of listings year over year for Josephine County were up 15% this week, thank goodness. There were 304 active listings on SOMLS this week in the residential market in Josephine County. So congratulations, Josephine County. Your prices are up and your number of listings are up. Let's see if we can get some more sales. Now, Klamath County, prices year over year this week are down 4%. The average single-family home in Klamath County, $345,857 for a residential home this week in Klamath County. The number of sold year over year in Klamath County were down 58%. I'm telling you, that's an inventory problem. There were only seven residential closings on SOMLS in Klamath County this week. Number of listings in Klamath County year over year this week were neutral. So they're still holding steady at about 223 active listings on SOMLS in Klamath County. So you can see, folks, we keep talking about it, direct correlation to the housing inventory, whether it's a shortage or we have too many, it definitely affects not only prices, but how many sales we have. So Klamath County, folks, see if you can get more listings. Jackson County prices year over year this week were up 4%. The average single-family home in Jackson County now costing $503,221. Number of solds in Jackson County year over year in the residential market were up 36%. There were 60 closings on SOMLS this week in Jackson County in the residential market. Congratulations. Number of listings are also up in Jackson County this week. Year over year, they're up 11%. There were 667 active listings in Jackson County in the residential market this week. Congratulations to Jackson County. Folks, let's keep those listings coming. It's the spring selling time. This is the perfect time in Southern Oregon to get your house on the market, and there's more homes to choose from. If you want to buy something and stay in Southern Oregon, which of course, it's the best place in the world, why, why go anywhere else, we say? So let's say hi to Brad Bennington. Well, good morning, Brad. We're so happy to have you back on the show.
Hey, good morning, Alice. Great to be here.
Yeah, welcome, welcome. So there's so much to talk about in construction in general and homeownership. Let's, if you don't mind, let's start with something basic, like how important is homeownership, especially here in Southern Oregon?
Yeah. You know, Alice, homeownership is critical. A lot of people, you know, people are busy living their lives, raising their family, so on and so forth, and they don't really think about things like this. But the reality is homeownership is the largest single factor in, in any family regarding future economic strength. And I'll, and I'll give you an example. So when my wife and I got married, uh, gosh, long time, 1976. So we, we closed a mortgage on our first home in September of 1977. And we had, it was, the mortgage was so expensive, we didn't know how we were going to be able to afford it. It was $250 a month. And, and on, on a $25,000, I mean, it was just, that was just what it worked out to. So principal interest taxes and insurance were, uh, it was like $249.75 or something like that. So 200, 250 bucks to buy the mortgage on a $25,000 home. We got a nine and a half percent FHA loan, and all we had to come up with was closing costs. And the closing costs, the closing costs, as I recall back then, were about $1,200, give or take. So to give you, so to give you some context for that, though, my, my wife was the office manager for a real estate, a local real estate company, and she was knocking down $2.50 an hour doing that. And I was the foreman for a construction company, and I was knocking down $4 an hour.
Wow.
So both, so both of us together were knocking down, our combined income was $6.50. I, I know, it's funny, it's funny, isn't it? But gas, but gasoline back then was, depending on when, when you bought it and where you bought it, gasoline back then was anywhere from 22 to 25 cents a gallon. Right? So that, so there, so there, there's some context. But that home today, and I just, I just checked it, that home today, same home that we bought back, back in 1977, today has a value, a market value of $340,000.
Wow.
$340,000. Now, obviously, we saw, we, we, when, when we, uh, we've had a couple of homes since then. But the point that I'm trying to make here for the benefit of your listeners is this. The single most important factor for most of us, for most families, not all, but most, the single most important family for long-term economic stability and wealth accumulation is being a homeowner. So, uh, under the Trump administration, Dr. Ben Carson was the Secretary of Housing and Urban Development. And he was, uh, he was interviewed here a couple of months ago and said something that we should all pay attention to. He said that while he was a secretary, they did a study on the economic profiles of homeowners versus renters. Now, they didn't look at everybody in the United States, but in the, in the area that they, that they looked at, what they discovered is in this, in this research group, the average net worth of a homeowner was $200,000, and the average net worth of a renter was $5,000. $195,000 different.
Yeah, huge disparity.
Huge, a huge difference. And as a professional Realtor, you know yourself, you know, the, the power and the impact that long-term real estate ownership, uh, brings, brings to people. So the question is, is, so we know, we know that homeowners accumulate equity in their home. We know that. Sometimes faster, sometimes slower, but over a long period of time, it's always positive. It's always positive over time. Sometimes it takes more time, sometimes less. So the question is, is, well, isn't there equity appreciation for renters as well? And the answer is, yes, there is, but it's to the investor that owns the property and not the renter.
Yeah, the landlord.
So this is why, this is why homeownership is so important uh, to people in our community, really to just about anyone, is, is that for the benefit of your long-term economic prosperity and economic strength, there are a few things that you can do that are more important than becoming a homeowner.
It's, yeah, it makes such a difference. Um, you know, uh, it's shocking, the appreciation that that house that you and your wife bought in 1977, in, in just 50 years, it's just incredible. And then also the changes in the economy make, uh, make a difference. And we'll, we'll talk about that, uh, again later in the show. Um, so when we're discussing, um, new construction here in Southern Oregon, uh, we only have a few minutes before our, our first break. But can you, uh, bring us up to speed kind of what's happening here in Southern Oregon with new construction? How are we doing?
Yeah, yeah. So, so Alice, new construction is, uh, in, in spite of, uh, our, our new governor, making, making home construction, uh, one of the priorities of her administration, the reality is, is that here, here in the state of Oregon, our builders and developers are really hobbled by, by one of the most restrictive set, uh, set of land development ordinances, really anywhere in the nation. Oregon is the most land use restricted state in the Union. Um, and we did it to ourselves, actually, our legislature did it to us back in 1972. Uh, the Senate passed Senate Bill 100. Out of Senate Bill 100, there was a rulemaking created that gave us the Land Conservation and Development Commission, as well as statewide building code. Out of LCDC came DLCD, which is the Department of Land Conservation Development. And, well, we'll talk about more of this on the other side of the break. I can give you some more, some detailed examples of, of what this looks like. But what your listeners could understand is this, is that for most of our developers, from the time that they pony up to the cash register and buy a piece of property, until they can actually create and sell a product to the public, it's, it's often three years. And that's if everything goes well. So if you can imagine any other industry where you have to, where you have to put your cash on the table, and we're talking about large chunks of cash, you put, you put a chunk of cash on the table, and now you begin the process of doing studies and getting permits and getting water quality reports and hiring engineers and hiring all of these other people that you have to do to comply with this really, really complicated and gigantic uh, land development ordinances. Three years later, if you're lucky, you finally have a product that you can sell to the public and begin recovering some of your investment. How does that sound?
Wow, wow. Well, we're gonna dive deeper into that. We're talking to Brad Bennington, Builders Association, Southern Oregon. One of our favorite, favorite people, very knowledgeable, very funny, and very straight to the point. We just love having you on the show, Brad. We're gonna take a quick break. We're gonna say thank you to John L. Scott, Ashland and Medford, Guy Giles Mutual Mortgage, and our local Rogue Valley Association of Realtors. Thank you for your sponsorship, for bringing us the show every week. We'll be right back. Well, hey, Southern Oregon, welcome back to the Real Estate Show. We are so excited to welcome Brad Bennington, Builders Association, Southern Oregon, back to the show again. Thank you, Brad, for jumping in today.
Great to be here, Alice. Always a pleasure to be here.
Well, we always learn so much. You are just such a wealth of information and a very practical point of view, uh, I might add. Uh, so right before the break, we were talking about, um, the burden, if it's okay to put it that way, the burden that builders and Oregonians bear that is different from the rest of the United States.
Right, right.
Oh, please go ahead.
Yeah, yeah. So you know, you know, one, one, one of our, one of our friends, uh, Alice, Sal Escaval, who served in, in our legislature,
Yes, yes.
Close to 18 years. So after, after his last term in the legislature, which I think, I, I think his last year was, uh, 2019, might have been 2018, but he and his wife Jan, and, and by the way, both of them were Realtors, you know that. Sal and Jan were both Realtors. And they, they made the decision to, uh, leave Oregon, and they, and they moved to a, a nice, uh, you know, rural area of Idaho, bought, bought some acreage, uh, built a, built a cabin and whatnot. So when Sal and Jan bought this property, they already knew, uh, the, the type of house they wanted to build. They wanted to build this kind of cabin type, type of house and whatnot. And of course, Sal's perspective, and here's, here's a guy, you know, he's a professional Realtor here in Oregon, and he served in our legis, legislature. He's a professional Realtor, so he's very familiar with land use laws, the construction, all these things. So he and Jan, they, they go down to, to the, uh, county courthouse in the county where they bought their property, and they're loaded for bear. I mean, they've got drawings, they've got engineering. You know, they've got their checkbook, they've got this, they've got that. I mean, they're just, you know, they're, 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 they're ready, and they're, and they're expecting, they're expecting, you know, uh, a, a fairly long journey toward, toward getting this approved. So they, they, uh, bring all, all their documentation, and they, they get in front of the, uh, planning official there at, 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 at the county, and, uh, start telling her what, what they want to do. And she says, oh, Mr. Escaval, I think, I think that it looks like you have a very nice piece of property and, uh, really like, uh, what, what you want to build there, and this, this all looks, uh, very, very, very nice. You're gonna need a permit, uh, for your electrical, and you're gonna need a permit for your, uh, plumbing. And he says, no, 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 you don't under, you don't understand. Uh, we're gonna build a cabin. This cabin is gonna become our home. We're going to build it. It's gonna have a foundation. We're going to move dirt. We're gonna put in a driveway.
We're gonna have air conditioning.
And she looks, and she looks, she looks at Sal and Jan and says, sir, this is, this is Idaho. I'm gonna have you out of here. She says, I'm gonna have you out of here in an hour, and you can go build whatever you want on your property.
Wow, wow, what a difference.
Yeah, and Sal, and Sal had to tell me that story, and we, we, we both had a good, a good, uh, laugh out of it. And, and, uh, he built, he, he and Jan built that cabin. It's beautiful. They're, they're, they're living in it right now. Uh, he sent me a picture yesterday of, of a bull elk walking through their, uh, walking through their property. So they're, they're just. But getting, but getting back to the point, so, but here, but here in Oregon, we have, we really have, uh, one of the most regulated land use states in the United States. So I'll give, give you an example, and it is, it isn't just land use, it's also regulatory agencies. Oregon has its own DEQ, and Oregon al, also has its own EPA. A lot of people don't know that.
Can I just, uh, jump in? Don't all states have their own state DEQ and?
Oh, heck no.
Okay.
Oh, oh, heck no. Heck no. And what, and why would they? Because, but Oregon, Oregon has one. It was established by the Oregon Legislature because federal DEQ and federal EPA. Well, you know what, Alice? They're just not quite restrictive enough, right? They're just, they're just not. You know, and I, and I, I, I say that tongue-in-cheek because anybody that's had anything to do with federal DEQ or federal EPA knows, knows that I'm, I'm kidding. So Oregon has its own DEQ. So I'll give, give you a quick example. There's, there's a very, very active contractor developer, and he bought some property that had already been platted. Now, as you know, platted is the, that's the legal process where, where a developer uh, goes to the, the correct jurisdiction and applies for the ability to develop a subdivision. So this is property that had already been platted. Uh, things went wrong economically, it went back to the bank, and this, this developer bought it back from the bank. So this, this piece of property, which, which, uh, had already been platted for 75 dwellings, had already been through a tremendous amount of review. So once again, it, it, uh, so now that, now that we have a new owner, he's got to recreate some of that paperwork. Well, back in the 1940s, this had been farm property, and somebody, somebody, uh, dug, dug an area to make, make a pond that they could irrigate out of. Well, under, under Oregon, uh, DEQ and EPA, that now becomes a wetland. Even though it didn't occur naturally, even though it was created by a farmer back, back in World War II days, uh, now, now it's considered a wetland. So even though it had already been platted, and even, and even, even though he had this, uh, 75-watt subdivision, in other respects, ready to go, this kicked off as a set of, of, uh, of reviews by the state of Oregon that took three years, an additional three years and half a million dollars of reports and engineering, hydrology, everything under the sun. Finally, it got, it got resolved when, uh, Congress, see, it was actually, this is when Congressman Greg Walden was still in office. Congressman Greg Walden got, got involved with the Army Corps of Engineers and finally got it resolved. But it cost this developer three years of time and half a million dollars of cash. Now, you can imagine, so he bought this 75-watt subdivision. I can't reveal the amount of money they paid for it, but it was a lot. So he's paying debt service on all of this property that he purchased for three years, buying a half a million dollars of reports and studies, permits and everything else, and cannot do anything until he gets a sing result.
Wow, as a business owner, that is really scary. And sorry to interrupt, but also you gotta remember, it wasn't a planned expense. They didn't know this was happening. Yeah, I'm sorry, please go on. It's, yeah, very unnerving.
So Alice, so Alice, this, this subdivision, this subdivision, finally with Congressman Walden's help, was finally approved. And this developer managed to economically survive long enough to complete it. But who wound up paying all of those costs? Who, who, what, what did that, what did that developer have to do to every one of those? Correct. So who really winds up paying the cost for all of this overregulation? It, it's the consumer. So, and this developer, and by, and by comparison, this, this builder was building, and you're gonna laugh at me when I tell you this. This builder was building a very nice 1,500 square foot, three-bedroom, two-bath home with an attached garage, nice yard, cedar fencing and landscaping. He was selling these, uh, at, at a, at a very regular basis in 2014 for about $240,000 each, right? And he had a subdivision that he was building. So three-bedroom, two-bath, 1,500 square feet, attached garage, paved driveway, you know, ni- nice little starter home, $240,000. Here's where I tell you that because of regulatory oversight, regulatory compliance, the same builder is building the same home today, same exact floor plan, but he now has to charge $440,000, and he's making less margin today than he was in 2014, 10 years ago.
Wow.
Because of regulatory impacts through, through our, uh, legislature.
So about, about how much money in Oregon gets assigned to every new construction and soft costs uh, for every house, for every address, about what, what is added on?
I, I can actually give you, give you a pretty good, uh, and give you a pretty, pretty good guess. So the majority, the majority of regulatory compliance is actually in the dirt, and the dirt is the most expensive part of the home. For instance, if you, if you sit down with, uh, with Brian Cho Toon, um, Director, uh, excuse me, City, City Manager for City Medford, say, well, Brad, you know, our, our system development fees and our building permits, they're not that bad. Uh, you know, compared to some, some other jurisdictions, and he would be correct. But what they don't address is, is issues that you and I just talked about, which is all, which is all of the work and really expensive costs of getting the land into, into a form that you can actually develop it. So the answer is this. The answer to your question, Alice, is here in Southern Oregon, when you look at, at a new home, more than 40% of the cost of that new home is regulatory compliance. So let, let, let's put it, so let, let's put a number to that. If you're looking at a $400,000 home, and good luck finding one, good luck finding a $400,000 home.
Yeah, those are, those are the fixtures now.
$400,000 home, 40% of 400,000 is $160,000. So that young couple, if they can find 160, if they can find a $400,000 home, $160,000 of that mortgage is not for dirt, concrete, roofing, drywall, concrete. It's, it's regulatory compliance.
So, and that's, that's unique to Oregon, is what you're saying. Yeah.
Well, Oregon is, it's, it's not unique in terms, in other words, regulatory compliance is, is pretty, regulatory compliance exists i- in, in, in all of our states, but here in Oregon, it's just through the roof.
So we're gonna have to take a break. This is so fascinating. Sorry. It's a hard break on this one, Brad. We're gonna be right back, uh, with Brad Bennington.
And let's, and let's talk about why it's important to do something. When we come back, let's talk about why it's important to do something soon, if you can.
Yes, absolutely. This is why we love having you on. Uh, we're gonna take a quick break, say thank you to our sponsors. We'll be right back with Brad Bennington and more great information. He's with the Builders Association, Southern Oregon. Don't go away. Well, welcome back to the Real Estate Show, folks. We're gonna continue our great conversation with Brad Bennington from the Builders Association of Southern Oregon. Just a quick note that this episode will air again, and you can listen to all this fabulous information from Brad uh, tomorrow, Sunday at 8:00 AM on our new radio home, the Ace, AM 1300. So Brad, we were right in the thick of it. Let's go back and finish chatting about the soft costs that are unique to Oregon when you're building a home.
Yeah. Well, of cour- of course, uh, Alice, what we're talking about is, is the fact that Oregon, because it's such a hyper-regulated state, the costs of developing land here are so much higher than other, than other states. So we, we talked a little bit about our friend Sal, Sal Escaval moving to Idaho.
Which is not unusual, by the way. We have a lot of people going to lower-cost states.
Oh my gosh, do, do, do we ever? Yeah, yeah, we, we, we sure do. We have, uh, well, um, you know, the other, the other day, just, just a few days ago, I, I was discussing, uh, the escalating impacts. And this, and this is why it's important for people, if you want to buy, if you want to build, I always suggest that you want to think about doing it, uh, now rather than later, and we'll talk about, about more about that in a little bit. But I was having a discussion with somebody about, about, uh, so the governor, the governor in her bill, it was, uh, Senate Bill 1537. Senate Bill 1537 creates an entirely new statewide regulatory agency called the Housing Accountability and Production Office. So that was in Senate Bill 1537, was the governor's bill. Uh, if you're me, if you're me, and you ask yourself, have you ever seen a time in the history of Oregon, as far as you know it, where creating a new regulatory agency actually helped things get better? My answer to that would be, well, that certainly hasn't been my experience. But, but, uh, but, uh, that, it was supported, uh, our, our state office, uh, supported it. I'm gonna, I'm not gonna throw rocks at it until we get down the road. But, but one of the things that the governor suggested about funding this new, this new, uh, 1537, uh, cost is a statewide property tax. And this gentleman, I was talking, talking, I, I mentioned a statewide property tax, and he says, well, I, I thought we already did that. It, you know, what, it was not that.
Our taxes are pretty high already.
That cat tax. And I said, no, the cat tax, see, that, we call it the cat tax, the commercial activity tax. But, but the actual, uh, title of it was to fund education. I said, which, you know, the, this is where I say in a very non-political way, every time the Oregon Legislature wants to, wants to bring a new tax to the table, they, they call it something to do with children or education. That's just, that's just what they do. When they, when they wanted to do the lottery, it was for, I mean, every time they wanted to.
It was for the children, yeah.
Yeah, it's for the children, right? It's for, it's for the children. So anyway, I was explaining to this gentleman, I said, yeah, this, you know, a statewide property tax is, uh, is, is supposed to help fund, um, supposed to help fund this new Housing Accountability and, and, uh, Production Office. And he says, he says, oh my gosh. He says, that's gonna be a lot of money. I, I, I said, yeah, I said, so now the bill has been signed by the governor, 1537 got signed into law. So the bill, and this is a 48-page bill, I, I read every page of it. This is a 48-page bill, got a lot in it. So now it goes to rulemaking. So the bill says what they want it to do, and now it goes into rulemaking, which is where they figure out how to pay for it and figure out how to do what it's supposed to do. And again, now we get back to Oregon being a hyper-regulated state, which it is. Now we've got an entire new regu- regulatory agency that just got created that we're also going to have to comply with. Um, I would, I would just suggest to your listeners, Alice, that number one, we're in a recession. Number two, we're in a period of not just inflation, but hyperinflation. We're, we're in a period of the highest inflation that we've been in the last 40 years. Those aren't my words. That, that, that's from, uh, Secretary, Secretary of the Treasury. And so what does that mean? It means if you are going to live in Oregon, and, I mean, anywhere in Oregon, not just here in Southern Oregon, if you're gonna live in Oregon, if you want to, or if you are committed to building something or buying something, I will strongly suggest to you that now is the time to get going on that. Because one year from now, the likelihood, not the possibility, but the likelihood is that whatever that you want to build or buy is gonna be anywhere from 10 to 15% more expensive. So I'm just, I'm just telling you, and I'm not trying to be a wise guy or, or anything like that. I'm just saying, what I see happening in the industry, our materials are going up, our labor impacts are going up, our regulatory, uh, burdens are going up. We just had a new energy code kick in. The new energy code is gonna add a lot of money to every new home built, built in the state of Oregon. All of the regulatory impacts that, that have been, and by the way, regulatory impacts here in Oregon, uh, historically have, have gone up five to six times faster than the consumer price impact, right?
Oh, dear.
So if the CPI, so just give you something to think about. So if the CPI is 4%, it means our regulatory impacts have been going up about 20%. And as crazy as that sounds, maybe to some people listening to you and me, that's just the way it's been here in Oregon. We, the, the people that we have in Salem have all these wonderful ideas, and they forget that they have to be paid for by somebody. I'll give you an example. I, I, I will tell you, there's somebody who just got there, they, they have some investment properties that are owned locally, and they got, they got a notice of non-renewal from their insurance company. And they said, why, and they said, why do we get non-renewal? And they say, well, there's this fire map that was created by Senate Bill 762. And these properties that you own are in an extreme area. And they said, how can it be an extreme area? It's in downtown Ashland. It's in the railroad district in downtown Ashland. Well, it's, you know, on the fire map, it says it's an extreme fire, so we can't, we can't cover your property anymore. You're gonna have to go to a specialty insurer. So this property owner, now this isn't, this isn't a construction issue. Obviously, these properties already exist. But where it impacts new construction is, is if you want to do new construction in an area that's in this map, you may not be able to build there. And so what happens is, is there's only so much property that you can build in. Generally speaking, it's gonna be the urban growth boundary in whatever city you want to build in, whether it's Medford, Ashland, Eagle Point, Center Point, you know, what have you, you're gonna have to build on what's called the urban growth boundary. Well, if this fire map takes a big chunk of that real estate out of the inventory because it's deemed to be in an extreme area, Well, if this fire map takes a big chunk of that real estate out of the inventory because it's deemed to be in an extreme area, what that's going to do is, and what it has done is, it's gonna increase the value and the cost of all the rest of the property that's not in the extreme area. It's gonna put more pressure on it. So these are the things that, that I would suggest to your listeners. If you wanna buy a home, if you wanna build a home, and we're gonna agree that building now in two thousand twenty-four is gonna be a lot more expensive than it would have been in two thousand twenty-two, twenty, twenty-one, tw- twenty-three, what have you. It's still going to be significantly less expensive than it, than it will be in two thousand twenty-five, uh, tw- twenty-six. So, and I'm not talking about interest rates. I'm talking about actual hard costs, the cost of the property, the cost of the construction, the cost of the materials. In- interest rates and those things, we'll, we'll, we'll let your friend, uh, Guy Giles ta- talk about that. I'm just talking about actual hard costs. They're going up, up, up for the foreseeable future as far as we can see.
Well, and I, I just don't know how we're gonna absorb all that, um, but, uh, but we do need housing. So then the question comes, how are the builders, uh, dealing with this? And we have local builders, um, that are small businesses and then we have, more recently, actually some big corporations have come in, more than one.
Right.
Um, and, and why would, why would a big corporation with lots of data analysis people, uh, pick Oregon? Why would they, why would they think the market is good here if we've got all this, uh, expense? Why are they not building somewhere else? I feel like all of a sudden, we're really lucky to be getting the new construction we are.
Yeah, yeah. So, um, so there are, there are certain large companies that have taken an interest in, in, in Medford. And what they see looks to them like an opportunity because they, they build on a very different scale than our lo- our, our local builders, our low-volume builders.
Oh, I see.
Yeah, and, and the, and these guys are, you know, you know, I'm gonna answer your question, but I'm gonna answer it in a, in a, in a financial way. And I'm not gonna be specific. So the first conversation that you and I had today talked about the, the value of homeownership and how important it is and how, and how it builds wealth. And wealthy corporations that have lots of money, they have the same problem everybody else does. Anything that they're holding in cash is losing one and a half percent per month.
Gotcha.
So, so what do they wanna do with that money? Well, they wanna invest it in real estate and preferably in homeownership. I will tell you, I can't tell you how much, but I will tell you, a big chunk of what is getting built is going to wind up being rentals. So for homes, for homes that are going to be, uh, purchased and owned by local people, it's still gonna be pretty much the same set of circumstances that, that you and I talked about earlier. If we have, and I'll, and I'll, I'll just, uh, I'll pick on my friends, uh, at Mahar Homes. Mahar Homes is well-known as one of our local high, high-value home, home builders and, and they.
One of our favorites.
And they build, they build a product, they build a product that is very well-received by, by the public, lots of, I mean, there are a lot of people that they've just built, they've just bought one Mahar home out, out after another. These are people that are.
Yeah, they're great.
Purchased and live in. But these other homes, and we're gonna say a lot of these homes, a lot of this construction, Alice, is gonna be owned by corporations and out-of-area owners and they're the ones, so that, that kind of is the answer to your question is, is they're taking this out-of-area money and they're, they're investing it into Southern Oregon because they see it's a good deal for them, long-term investment-wise.
Well, we're gonna have to talk more about that because, um, that's not, maybe not in our community's best interest. We're talking to Brad Bennington, Builders Association, Southern Oregon. We gotta take a quick break. Don't go away. We'll be right back. Well, welcome back, folks, to the Real Estate Show. We've got Brad Bennington in the house from the Builders Association of Southern Oregon. Just a quick reminder, uh, yeah, before we finish up with Brad today, uh, that if you'd like to be a sponsor or a guest on the show, you can get ahold of me, Alice Lima. That's L E M A. Some people miss, uh, typed L I M A. It's L E M A, five four one, three zero one, seven nine eight zero. We'd love to welcome you on the show. Getting back to Brad, um, let's finish the thought that we were just talking about, uh, the cost of building, uh, might behoove you to do something now versus later.
Yeah, yeah. So, so a- a- again, Alice, so just reviewing what, what you and I have been ta- talking, uh, with on your show today is the cost of everything that has anything to do with home construction is going up. The cost of real estate is going up, the regulatory impacts are going up, the cost of products is going up and the cost of labor is going up. And, and ju- just to give you an example on, on, on materials, uh, so one of the most common materials that we use in home construction, uh, years, years and years ago, we used to use a product called plywood for doing, you know, our, our sheeting and whatnot. And we have a, a product that we've used for probably the last twenty-five years called oriented strand board or OSB board for short, OSB, which used to be, we used to manufacture a lot of it, uh, here in the state of Oregon. But because of, uh, regulatory and environmental things, you know, we don't have anywhere near the mills we used to. We don't have access to logs that we used to. So believe it or not, you know, we're, you know, we're almost all over OSB board, uh, down here in Southern Oregon. You know where ninety percent of our OSB board comes from, Alice?
Uh, not, no kidding, really?
Canada, right. It's Canadian trees that, and, and the, the board is manufactured in Canada and it comes down here on trucks. So the cost of OSB board, it, which, which again, is one of the most common materials that we use in home construction over the last, I'm gonna say, three weeks has just gone through the roof. So what that means is, is, you know, we know that economic impacts to builders wind up being economic impacts to home buyers. That's, that's just the way it works. When the cost of roofing goes up, when the cost of OSB board goes up, when the cost of concrete goes up, when, when the cost of all of these things go up, the builder only has one recourse and that's to, uh, recover those costs through the sale of the home in the form of increased cost. So this is why, this is why I say very, very, I make just the strongest suggestion possible to your listeners. If you are interested in buying a home, um, please pursue that aggressively now rather than later because, and, and I know the cost of money has gone up. The interest rates have gone up. I know that there's a lot of instability. And I would never, never, never suggest to anyone, do not borrow more money than you can reasonably afford to repay in, in a responsible manner. Don't, don't do that. That's not what I'm saying. I'm not saying that at all. What I'm saying is, is if you have the economic capacity to buy a home and if you are interested in buying a home or building a home, do yourself a favor and do it now. Engage that process now. Because the further you go down the road, as far as the eye can see, costs are just going to go up and up and up. So, so, uh, do, do it now. One of the other things that we didn't talk about is, is that, uh, when Governor Brown was still in office, in two thousand twenty, Governor Brown issued sixty-seven executive orders. If you can believe that, it was a record. And, uh, several of those executive orders were to the O- Occupational Safety and Health Administration. Oregon has its own OSHA, just like Oregon has its own EPA and has its own DEQ. It also has its own OSHA. So the governor, in her executive capacity, was able to direct OSHA to im- to implement certain rules. So these rules have no federal counterpart because they don't exist in any other state. These rules that I'm gonna tell you about right now only exist in the state of Oregon and they're rules that have to do with workers that are operating in smoky and, and hot, uh, conditions. So, so for instance, we know that, you know, we've had this, uh, forest fire issue and, and, and smoke problem, you know, for some time. I would say maybe that's more of a state and federal, uh, forest management, uh, problem, but that's just me. But, uh, these, these new rules, if there's smoke, they have to do with how many hours that your worker can work in that type of environment, what kind of, uh, mask they have to wear and all that sort of thing. And then because we live in Southern Oregon, you're, you're gonna find this interesting, there are now temperature requirements for employers, uh, to observe.
Oh dear.
The temperature is seventy degrees and under, there's one set of rules. If the temperature is between seventy and eighty degrees, there's another set of rules. Eighty to ninety is another set of rules. And over ninety degree, if it's over ninety degrees, the workers can't work, as my understanding of these rules, and I think I'm correct, the workers can't work at all. So when do you get these temperatures? You get these temperatures during our longest days of the year, the days when we would have the most productivity. And how often do we get days that are north of ninety degrees? Well, around here in Southern Oregon, we get a lot of days that are north of ninety degrees. So if you have a company and their job is building homes and they get in, and that, once that temperature goes above ninety degrees, they gotta shut everybody off and send them home or do whatever they have to do, what does that wind up doing to the cost of the home?
Is that for roofers, HVAC guys, like plumbers?
That's everything. That's, that's every, every company, every employee. Now, the ones that are exempt are the ones that are working inside with it, with an, an, in an air conditioner. This only applies to workers that are not in an air-conditioned environment. So that's basically anybody in our industry that works outside, right?
Yeah, but that's a lot of our working population in Southern Oregon.
You know, that's funny. That's what we, that's what we told Governor Brown. That's, that's what we told Governor Brown. If she said, thank you for your interest. Appreciate it. Yeah.
Okay.
But anyway, so this is the, this is the environment that our builders and developers are operating in, highly regulated, highly, highly regulated. April first, we just had a bunch of new energy code things, uh, kick in. One of the interesting things that just kicked in, you'll get a kick out of this, Alice, is that as of April first and after in the state of Oregon, all new housing must have, must have, not can have, must have uh, Bluetooth thermostats. So that mean.
They're requiring that?
That's required now, which, which means, so, and of course, we, we also know that in the state of Oregon, now, we, we have, we have electronic, uh, um, electric meters. So what that means is, is third parties that have, that have a sufficient regulatory authority can actually come in. If you've got your air conditioner set, set too low, or if you got your heater set too high, a third party with adequate, uh, authority can actually reach into your home and adjust your thermostat for you. How does that sound?
So I'm still trying to get over that I have to buy, uh, a really expensive.
Yes, all new housing, all new housing in the state of Oregon, it's part of the new energy code.
Okay. What else do you know about the new energy code?
No, we're just, we're, 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 we're gonna stop that. But here's the good news. So coming up, coming up, April, uh, excuse me, May third, fourth and fifth, we, we have the largest home show in Southern Oregon. We're holding at the expo. This is, I think it's our twenty-seventh one that we've done. But it's, it's the one place where you can find everything, all in one place with the experts. Three days, one, one inexpensive ticket. You can come all, all three days for the same price. Floor coverings, cabinets, gates, overhead door up, and we've got a lot of contractors, a lot of contractors are gonna be there this year. And we have a lot of our Realtors that are gonna be there as well. So we got Realtors, we got fire. It's literally one-stop shopping. Anything that you can imagine for your home and property, all in one place. We're gonna have live entertainment. We're gonna have a beer garden. We're, we're, we're gonna have, have, uh, food trucks. You know, things for the kids to do, just lots of fun, lots of fun things to do. Southern Oregon Home Show, uh, May third, fourth and fifth, any- anything and everything for your home, all in one place for three days.
And I highly recommend going to the home show. It's great fun. You get to see all the new whiz-bang stuff. You get to see all the, the folks, the small businesses, uh, that are local to us. We wanna support them. And that will be May third, fourth and fifth, out at the expo, uh, right off of I five, which we all know where that is.
Eighty, eighty, eighty percent of the exhibitors are local companies. Eighty percent are local companies, just like you, Alice.
It's great fun. We always, we always wanna go to that. So in the minute and a half we've got left, um, Brad from the Builders Association of Southern Oregon, how about a website? Any contact info?
Yeah, yeah. So our, our, our website is buildso.com, B U I L D S O dot com is in, is in, uh, Build Southern Oregon. And, and, uh, you're, and of course, our phone number that we've had for the last forty years ago, seven, seven, three, two, eight, seven, two, five, four, one, seven, seven, three, two, eight, seven, two. If you wanna email us, uh, our email address is info@buildso.com. But if you wanna, if you wanna come on our site and look and, and, uh, check out, uh, you know, the home show. By the way, we still have some exhibit space, not a lot. We still have a little bit of exhibit space if you have an interest in exhibiting. Uh, also in June, uh, June seventh, we've got our Builders Classic Golf Tournament coming up. That, that always, that always fills up as well. But this is.
Yeah, that's always fun.
It's, it's a lot of fun. But the Builders Association, Alice, as you know, we're a self-funding nonprofit. So, uh, what we do is we provide education, advocacy and policy support to the building industry and we do it for free. We do it for free. Everything, so you got, you got a question, how do I get a building permit? How do I find a contractor? Give us a call, come on our website. This, this is what we do. We, we provide education, advocacy and policy support for free to support our community.
Well, we love having you on, Brad. Folks, uh, have a great Southern Oregon weekend. See you next time.